...for your former employer. I, um...
Yeah.
...propped off my tax check today.
Well, I think that if we get some of the...
At about 1:30, I checked the website at...
Mayor, it's closed.
And my account showed...
That's Ken, the one...
Apparently it was not passed.
Um, we are on the air, folks.
Oh, yeah.
This evening. And, um, welcome, everyone.
Hi, folks.
And to our city council meeting. And, um, I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mary.
Fulton.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Kenopa. Here. Okay. Um, we have just a little bit different on our schedule of business this evening. And this is kind of, I walked on, a proclamation that, um, was sent to, um, city staff, um, from many, from many cities throughout Oregon. And so, I don't know if you have the proclamation on, in front of you, but it's honoring fallen Oregon City Reserve Police Officer Robert Lebkey and supporting the city of Oregon City as it heals from this tragedy. Whereas the city of Oregon City has suffered an unfathomable loss with the death this week of Reserve Police Officer Robert Lebkey. And whereas fallen Officer Robert Lebkey had served the citizens of Oregon City as, as most valuable public servant since 2009. And whereas law enforcement is an honorable, hard-working profession that diligently seeks to make our communities more livable. And whereas there is no greater sacrifice an officer can make for their community than to give their life. And whereas the death of a police officer shocks the soul of a community, our government, and the very freedoms the officers have sworn to protect. And whereas the impact of this tragedy upon the officers, family, friends, department, and community is immeasurable. Now, therefore, I share in Kenopa, Mayor, the city of Albany, Oregon, along with the city council and the citizens of Albany, Oregon, extend heartfelt condolences to the city of Oregon City, Oregon, its staff, Officer Lebkey's family, and Oregon City citizens. We mourn the loss of this valuable public servant and pray for healing and hope in this time of need. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Albany to be affixed the sixth day of November 2013. So, um, yes, that was a very tragedy. It's, um, many times, a lot of us, and our public safety officers, we all take it for granted when they go into a place to be able to rescue someone. And this was even from just a house fire. You know, how would you know that's what you would be faced with? So, um, um, we, you know, our hearts go out to this family and, um, and we all, we're proud of, um, the protection that we have in, um, our communities for our public safety officers. Thank you. Okay. Um, let's see. On tonight's agenda is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding planning file CZ-0113. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding the rezoning of the northerly 40,500 square feet of an existing 3.1 acre parcel from residential medium density to residential medium density attached. The reason for the zone change request is to allow a proposed 24-unit residential apartment building to develop under densities permitted in the RMA zone that are not permitted in the RM zone. The location is 1605 Oak Street Southeast. The applicant is Hans Thiagason?
Thiagason.
Thiagason. Um, I call to order this legislative public hearing at 7:18 PM. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? Okay. And any members wish to report a site visit? Okay. Or, um, any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Okay. And does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any counselor in this hearing and decision? Okay. All right. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the meeting recorder. For all of those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Any continuance or extension of the record requested by the applicant shall result in a corresponding extension to the 120-day limit. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I call for the staff report. Okay? David?
Hi. Good evening. I'm David Martino. I'm the lead current planner for the city of Albany. The owner of the Oak Street Apartments, represented by Hans Thiagason, is applying to rezone the northerly 40,500 square foot, uh, portion of his existing 3.1 acre parcel from residential medium density to residential medium density attached. The affected property is located on the east side of Oak Street, north of Queen Avenue. The purpose for the rezone is to allow the development of a 24-unit residential apartment building under densities permitted in the RMA zone that are not permitted in the RM zone. There's two standards that deal with allowable residential density in a given zone. The first standard looks at the minimum land requirement by the type of unit, specifically the number of bedrooms. And of the 24 units being proposed, 12 of those units are one-bedroom, and the other 12 will be two-bedroom. So, one-bedroom units require 2,000 square feet of land per unit, and two-bedroom units require 2,400 square feet of land per unit. So, based on the minimum land requirement by unit type, the property would have to be 1.2 acres to accommodate the completed 24-unit development, which exceeds the amount of land available. And so, that's the first standard for density. The second standard for density considers the maximum number of units that's allowed per gross acre of land. The RM zone caps density at 25 units per acre, while the RMA zone allows 35 units per acre. So, the subject property is 40,500 square feet, which equals .93 acre. So, according to the second standard of density, the number of units would be limited to 23 under the existing RM zone. So, under the RMA zoning, the proposal could meet both standards of density because by design, the RMA zone allows for higher density than the RM zone. RMA zoning here would also be consistent with the existing RMA zoning on the balance of Mr. Thiagason's property. The comprehensive plan designation for the property is medium-density residential, and according to the plan designation zoning matrix in Albany Development Code 2.760, both RM and RMA are compatible with the medium-density residential plan designation. Therefore, this request does not require an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So, the proposal was reviewed for conformance with criteria for zoning map amendments that are found in the city's development code. Staff and the planning commission found that the proposed zoning is consistent with the transportation systems plan, existing public utilities in Oak Street adjacent to the subject property are capable of serving development that would be allowed in the proposed zone, and, on balance, the residential medium-density attached zone best satisfies the applicable goals and policies of the Albany Comprehensive Plan. The proposed amendment will not affect implementation of the statewide planning goals. Therefore, staff and the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed zoning map amendment.
Okay. Does any counselors have any questions, the staff? Yep, Rich.
Is there ample parking, or the same amount of parking between the two zones for each apartment?
Sure. The parking, um, figures are calculated by, um, the standards that appear in Article 4, and so regardless of what commercial or industrial or residential zone that it is, the parking standards apply to the use rather than...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
David, in the information in our packet, I noticed that the neighborhood, excuse me, neighborhood meeting was held, the Boys and Girls Club, roughly a year ago, 10 months ago. Any comments or input from the neighborhood? How many people showed up?
Um, there were. I, I went to that neighborhood meeting, and there were a handful of people. The thing that I remember most from that meeting was the manager of another apartment complex across Periwinkle Creek that came in and wanted to ask questions about the nature of this development, whether it was market rate, or subsidized housing, or some other type of apartment development. I don't remember anybody else in particular raising any issues regarding the development. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then present it to, um, the clerk. Would the applicant please, would the applicant like to come forward? And please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the city And Mark, you were the first one, too, to sign up, so...
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mark Grenz, G-R-E-N-Z. I'm with Multitec Engineering, and our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast in Salem, and we represent Mr. Thiagason and, and his, uh, project in this matter. It's pretty simple, as the staff report outlined for you. We, when Mr. Thiagason acquired this property, um, we had a pre-app with the city, and we talked about what we could do in there, and we kind of, we knew what the, what the densities were and talked about between the two parcels and the, and the density we could have in there. We came up with a plan of 81 units for the site in total with adequate parking and could comply with all the criteria that's in your development code relative to how the buildings were oriented to the frontages and, and stuff. When we applied for site design review, staff made us aware of the fact that the one building, that's a 24-unit building that we had proposed in the northern part on this .93 acres, uh, was going to exceed the density that would be allowed under the RM zone, um, essentially by one unit, but it's a little, depending on which calculation you use, but essentially one unit. So, we tried reconfiguring the site to figure, to see if there's a different way we could orient the site in order to get out from it. And we have two different types of buildings, and the large 24-unit building, and then we had some, some, um, smaller 12-unit buildings. We tried to do that, but we couldn't. Once we tried to reorient it, we couldn't meet all of the other criteria that's in the development code. So, we, we obtained a site designer approval with that condition being able to build this particular building on successfully processing through the zone change to change from RM to RMA. So, that's why we're here. And like I said, it's essentially, it's, it's going to allow us to add one more unit than we, than we, than we would have been able to figure out how to do the other way. Uh, and it allows us to meet all the development criteria. We maintain all the setbacks, all of the parking, um, all the other criteria that we have to for the site to make it work. During this process, we provided, initially, we provided a, um, some transportation information that your, your Public Works Department reviewed, and then with this application, we provided a TPR, and as states in the staff report, that the, that both the intersections that were looked at by staff are still well within the criteria they set out for your, for your intersections with the addition of this. And if, if you look at it as we're adding one unit, then that adds essentially less than one PM peak hour trip to those intersections. So, it's pretty, pretty minimal. Uh, so, Planning Commission, uh, you know, voted to unanimously to approve this, and so I'd ask if you have any questions on me, otherwise we'd, we'd ask you to support this application as well.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does any member of the audience wish, wish to speak in support of the application? And, um, the, one other person that signed up was Dan. Were you wanting to speak on this item? Or did you just sign?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, this was on this one land use one that you had signed up. Yeah. So, we'll, we'll get to you later. Um, so, does any member of the audience wish to speak in support of the application? Okay. Not seeing anyone. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition of the application? Okay. And how about in, um, either in favor or not in favor? So, either/or, neutral. Okay. And does the applicant have anything else to state? Okay. And staff, I'm presuming, doesn't have anything else. So, with that, I declare the public hearing closed at 7:29 PM. And council, would you like to have the first reading read of the ordinance? Okay? All right. Go ahead.
An ordinance amending ordinance 4441, which adopted the city of Albany zoning map and adopting findings and conclusions for property located at 1605 Oak Street Southeast and declaring an emergency.
Second reading entitled...
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance 4441, which adopted the city of Albany zoning map and adopting findings and conclusions for property located at 1605 Oak Street Southeast and declaring an emergency.
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. And so, within five days of the decision, the community development director provides a written notice of the decision to the applicant and any other parties entitled to notice. A decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Okay? All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for their patience. We have to follow Oregon's land use laws on, um, certain, certain things that we have to state during the hearings. Okay. Um, with that, next is business from the public. And is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Yes, gentlemen? If you can come forward, state your name, spell your last name, and furnish your address. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Matthew Bechtel. To spell that, it is B-E-C-H-T-E-L. I live at 1430 Geary Surf of Southeast. I am a disabled Iraq War veteran, and I'm also the CEO of Albany Alternative Health Solutions.
Good evening. My name is Greg Bechtel. Spelled exactly the same, V-E-C-H-T-E-L. I live in 978 Ferry Street Southwest, and I apologize, I'm fighting off a cold, so bear with, excuse me, bear with me. I am also a service-connected, disabled veteran. I'm also the chief financial officer for Albany Alternative Health Solutions. My brother and I are both Albany residents, and we've been Oregon residents for most of our lives. We're here this evening as representatives for a section of the growing O-MMP community in and around Albany. We're also members of that community that have gone through all kinds of obstacles in order to get the pain management medication that we need. As such, we would like to open a clinic here in Albany, of which dispensation of medical marijuana will be a key service that we offer. Now, we'd like to work with the city to ensure that we have a clinical atmosphere and to do what we can to dampen the stigma that dispensaries currently have. Now, specifically, what we're planning to do is open a clinical dispensary that offers an assortment of alternative health solutions. For example, tobacco cessation will be something that, that we are keenly interested in providing for people, as well as aromatherapy, O-MMP, of course, natural remedies such as St. John's Root, ginseng, et cetera, as well as prayer and spiritual resources and merchandise, in the hope that some retail sales will be able to offset some of our operating costs. Now, there are those in the community who have expressed concerns about dispensaries, which is why we're here this evening, specifically that the people of Oregon had said no to the dispensaries in the past. That references Measure 74, which, as I'm sure most of you will remember, Measure 74 was written to allow limited sale of marijuana, as well as, it was poorly written, it lacked clarity with regard to regulation, operation, enforcement, and it would have cost the state between $400,000 and $600,000. We believe that these are the reasons why Measure 74 was defeated, and not because the Oregon residents are against dispensaries in and of themselves. Simply put, Measure 74 was a bad bill. It was poorly written. The sale of marijuana was, is, and will continue to be illegal in the state of Oregon as well as federally. We will never sell marijuana, period. Some others have voiced concerns regarding problems caused by dispensaries. And the idea that dispensaries will bring marijuana into Albany is, quite frankly, a little naive. Marijuana is in Albany. Local legal patients are forced to resort to illegal means to acquire the medicine they need, as it currently works. It's not realistic for patients to grow their own medication. Uh, it cost us over $2,000 to set up equipment to be able to grow just for our personal needs. This is not realistic for majority of, of people in the city of Albany. That's why the law was written, to allow for specialized growers. Now, the primary difference between a legal operation and an illegal retail marijuana establishment is the bottom line. The law is written such that it must be zero-sum. You cannot profit, nor can you sell marijuana. And this is a, a common misconception. So, the simple solution to ensure compliance is audits. It, it is completely illegal to sell, and, and we stress that anytime we talk to people because that is the, that is the primary difference. Now, regarding the federal illegality, this is not the first time that Oregon has stood behind legislation that was counter to the federal government's rulings, for example, the Death with Dignity Act. Additionally, the Obama administration itself has stated that it would not file suit against states who have legalized the use medically or otherwise of marijuana. However, the pursuit of criminal enterprises who benefit from the sale of marijuana against state regulations will continue to be a prime target of the Department of Justice, as per their 29 August memo. We welcome this. Criminal enterprises do profit from the sale of illegal drugs. Walgreens profits from the sale of legal drugs. We much rather would see Walgreens in our neighborhoods. Now, the unique opportunity that cities have is to dramatically decrease the illegal trafficking of marijuana through oversight and regulation. We welcome that, and by working with the city, excuse me, we can be the flagship for how organizations medically minded down the road should operate by writing and setting the standards. And that is the great advantage that we're at at this juncture, is that the cities can write the rules about how these organizations can off, and can operate under state law. Excuse me, I apologize. Not only can we do this locally, but we can also do this on a state level to where we can be kind of the banner for how other cities can adopt regulations about how their dispensaries can operate. Excuse me. So, right now, we're at a crossroads. We're looking at either prohibition versus regulation. Medford has chosen the prohibition route, and as such, they are going to be in for a long, expensive legal battle during which time they're losing revenue for the city. Albany has a unique opportunity to custom-build regulations, given the business license, you know, how, pretty much any business can come into Albany. This gives Albany a great opportunity to really custom-build regulations about how dispensaries can operate in the city and how the city can be, excuse me, repaid for allowing that, for, for that allowance. Now, we would rather work side by side on a mutually beneficial future, where patients have safe, legal access to medication, so we can stop places like the Dank Tank from being the representation of what a clinical dispensary should be. To us, it's reprehensible.
As such, Albany Alternative Health Solutions is going to follow a not-for-profit model with patients' needs in mind while still following state regulations. Currently, most of our patients, they live in rental units or assisted-home living, like us. Every time we treat our pain at home, we risk becoming homeless because there's nothing in the law that protects us from landlords as patients. And when you consider that 40% of the city are renters, potentially, that's 7,500 families that are going to be, could be homeless. Now, this is just one of the many threats that patients face on a daily basis without the facility to accommodate their needs. All right? Now, granted, not all of these people are patients. However, there are currently 1,600 medical marijuana patients in Lynn County alone, and there's another 11,000 in the surrounding counties. So, going forward with House Bill 3640, when it goes into effect, post-traumatic stress disorder is going to be an O-MMP qualifying condition. All right? So, we expect to see a massive influx on the system as more veterans are able to, to join the program. What we need now is a professional clinic, all right? And we are here and ready to work with the city. So, what does the city need that, that we can work together on?
When we make ourselves available to individual city council members, either here or outside, we have a packet of information that we brought with us that, if you'd like to go over, we're, you know, we want to work together.
Okay. All right. Sounds great. And, um, I think you're welcome to stay through our meeting because I think towards the end of our agenda, our city attorney will be kind of updating on some information that the council had asked for.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
And thank you for your time this evening.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from business from the public? Dan, you had signed up, so this would be the time. Yeah.
Okay. I'm Dan Meltberger. M-I-L-T-E-N-B-E-R-G-E-R, 2825 Jackson, southeast Albany, Oregon. Um, I became aware that the city was not, that's right, the staff at the city was going to put a fence in that would not be on the property line of the airport, and, uh, I was there when the, uh, committee had voted unanimously to have the fence on the property line. And the staff explained to me that, uh, the parks would mow the lawn and wouldn't be an expense to the airport to take care of the property that was outside the fence. I didn't even laugh. I thought that was ridiculous. So, uh, I just want you to know that, uh, I agreed with the, uh, commission, that, uh, advisory commission that recommended unanimously to put the fence on the property line. And, uh, then the other day, I understand that, uh, you might possibly have a wrought iron fence on the property. I was just thinking that if something like that happened, that, uh, the airport wouldn't have to cover the, uh, additional cost if that ended up costing more. Uh, the fence is, uh, something that the FAA wants to be, uh, to protect the airport, and, uh, I don't think they require that, but that would certainly be acceptable to me to have a wrought iron fence. I just know that that wouldn't be the minimum of what is, uh, needed. Like I was telling someone the other day, I drive an old Saturn, but I could drive a Cadillac, except I look okay in that little Saturn. So, uh, and I think I've made myself clear on everything.
There wasn't a conversation, you weren't there, Dan, so there was no conversation about making a wrought iron fence. That was just a, a thought, an idea, but there was no conversation over that, so, or no, no decision made.
Okay. I just know how good they can look.
Yeah. So, no... All right. That was hearsay. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay. Yeah, Cameron?
Hi. My name is Cameron Settlemeyer. S-E-T-T-L-E-M-I-E-R. I live at 237th Avenue Southwest. And what I'm having pass out to you right now is a photo of the structure that's at 177 Seventh Avenue Southeast. This particular property, is my understanding, is going to be one of the subject properties for a potential purchase by the city for, uh, room to build a new fire station. Um, as you can tell from the photos, this particular structure is fairly old. How old is it? Well, it's, it's 98 years old. It was built in 1915. Um, and it's a, it's a very unique structure. There's really not another structure like this in Albany. Um, there's not a lot of structures like this actually anywhere in the state of Oregon. Um, I've always wondered what this structure was when I look at it, because it's only a couple of blocks down from my house. Well, on the second page is the 1925 Sandborne map. And that Sandborne map shows that it was a auto repair garage. And if you look back at the first photo, it, it makes sense as far as the architectural details of the building. It's got very narrow, um, garage-style doors that's similar to you would, you would see as an accessory garage to a house in the area as far as the size of the doors, but yet the building's obviously too, too large just to be a, a garage for a house. It's got very narrow garage-style doors, that's similar to you would see as an accessory garage to a house in the area, as far as the size of the doors, but yet, the building's obviously too large just to be a garage for a house. It's obviously a commercial structure. And it also has, one of the garage doors is set back a little ways, so that they could actually work on cars on the outside, if they were like running the automobile while they're doing a repair or checking it. What kind of cars would they be checking or repairing when this structure was built? Well, in 1915, the Model T was the latest going thing around. This building is from the infancy of the automobile era, and it shows a real transitional era, as far as history is concerned, when we're transitioning from the horse and buggy era to the horseless carriage. So, this is a, actually, very viable historic structure. And it still maintains a lot of its original features, from the exposed eaves, to the wood decorations around the windows, around the facade. Albany's looked as a leader in the historic preservation movement. We were obviously given the first Heritage All-Star Community Award, just recently. So, we, you know, we're looked to as the leaders in this regard. And we should not be destroying a key historic structure, just because it happens to be inconveniently located. So, my understanding is, again, there'll be a resolution to purchase this particular structure that it lies on, for building a new fire station. And what I'm asking is, that as part of this resolution, that either this particular parcel is not included in that, or that this particular parcel, the building on it, is preserved, or moved to a different location where it can be preserved.
Yeah, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. So, I think we will be able to have some time, if the council moves forward with purchasing the property, we'll have some time to see what we can do to be able to save the building.
Right. Ideally, what I'd like is that it's in the resolution itself, that it is purchased, if that's part of the resolution, that it is preserved.
Okay, yeah. Any questions of Cameron? No? Okay, thank you, Cameron. Okay, anyone else from Business from the Public? All right, thank you, folks. So, next is a resolution, which this is on page 32, and this is over the purchase and sale agreement, over the property that was just mentioned. And does staff have any thoughts on this? So, it must be. Here's the chief.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, the Fire Department is requesting that the council authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the owners of the property at, that was just discussed, at 177 Southeast, Seventh Avenue, 623 Southeast Lyon, and the east portion of 655 Southeast Lyon, for a sum not to exceed $545,000, following analysis of the site's suitability for city use. We've been working with an environmental attorney, and with the city attorney's office, and have come to an agreement with the property owner, and have a purchase and sale agreement ready to go on this purchase, for that price that I discussed. At one point, that wasn't mentioned in the council, and I talked to the property owner here just the other day, to make sure it was okay to say this, his intention is that he is going to give $50,000 back to the Fire Department, as he stated, that we've been good neighbors of his for a lot of years, and he respects that relationship that we've had, and he wants to make sure and give that back. So, that's not included in the purchase price. That would be a donation back to the Fire Department, in addition to what's listed there. That purchase would consist of portions of those parcels, which you can see on the map on page 31, with the Fire Department and the current fire station, I should say, Station 11, in the upper left-hand corner, Hasty Freeze in the bottom left-hand corner, and then what's in red there, the Richards Cleaners at 623 Southeast Lyon, and then the old auto dealership there at 177 Seventh Avenue, and then the east portion of what is the Hasty Freeze property, not to include the Hasty Freeze itself. The property would, this purchase would allow us to acquire about 14,000 square feet of land, and those two buildings. The cleaners, we believe, well, it will go through some environmental analysis, and most likely, that building would end up being demolished through this process. But the building at 177 Seventh Street, I have had conversations with the current property owner about either relocating that building, or salvaging the building and moving it somewhere else. So, that has been in our conversations throughout this process. With this additional purchase, that would put the total amount of land available to the Fire Department for building a new downtown fire station, right at about 1.6 acres, which is in line with what the consultant said that we needed for a new two-story downtown fire station. In addition, one other thing I wanted to let you know about, I did receive word here about two weeks ago, that we were successful in getting the Oregon Brownfield Redevelopment Fund grant for $60,000, that will go toward the environmental assessment, and then also the attorney's costs associated with this project. So, I've got, actually, those documents that we're ready to move forward with. And then, if there is an issue with the dry cleaner, there is Oregon DEQ Dry Cleaner Funds that are available as well, that we would ultimately tap into. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
May I make a comment? I'd like to compliment the chief on the grant from the Brownfield Fund, that is, was structured in a way that would allow us to recover our costs for the specialized legal counsel. My office doesn't charge you anything for my involvement in this matter. But this obviously has complex site remediation elements, dealing with the Dry Cleaners Fund, dealing with the state of Oregon DEQ, and it was thought best to get attorneys that specialize in the structuring of that agreement. The agreement is very detailed, to protect the city, be fair to the property owner. I think it's a very good purchase and sale agreement, but I'm even more pleased, in a sense, that we're able, through the chief's efforts with the grant, to be reimbursed for those extra costs, so that you get the benefit of specialized legal work, which you're not going to have to be out of pocket for.
Bessie?
Yeah. I could not locate it, but chief, I thought I read recently that the cleaner fund, cleaner...
The dry cleaner fund?
Yeah, that it was actually being depleted, that there wasn't any money. I mean, it was just in the last couple of weeks, and I could not locate it. Have you heard anything about that?
You know, I know that they're doing, they're active in doing projects, and so, that is going to spend down some of the funds. But all indications that we've had in our dealings with the DEQ and the Dry Cleaner Program is that there are funds available, and adequate funds to be able to take care of this.
Okay, great, thanks.
I have an Anne Catlin question. Does this structure, the little garage, does it fall into our code, that if we are to tear down a historic structure, we have to spend a year, or take a year, to be able to try to find a location for it?
No. Thank you, Mayor, Anne Catlin. This property falls outside of our historic district boundary, so it's not on our local inventory, and is not subject to any of those regulations.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So, is the council open? Oh, yeah. Uh-huh.
How difficult would it be to add onto the resolution that we intend to do everything possible to find a way to move the historic buildings?
Why don't you just make that a motion, to amend the resolution, because I'm sure Mary got that down? And that would not be difficult at all.
Okay, I'll sort of move.
The motion is to...
Amend the resolution to include an extra statement, be an extra paragraph expressing the council's intent to do everything possible to preserve that building.
I'll sort of move that.
Okay, all right.
Amendment.
There hasn't been an original motion, so it's not an amendment to the motion.
I beg your pardon, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, so, you could just make that as your motion, with the changes of adding that, we, you know, do make all the efforts we can in trying to relocate it.
Saying I have to move to approve the resolution and add this as an amendment.
With that.
You would be moving to approve the resolution with the addition that you just read.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll move, that we approve the resolution and add the attorney's suggested, proposed amendment.
Proposed language to it, yeah. Okay, all right. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all right. Motion's been made in a second, and that would be including, adding another statement about relocating the garage. So, questions? Eric, and then Floyd?
Well, the 600-pound gorilla in the room. We've just been told by the public that they don't want to do this right now, whatever that is, you know. I don't know why they don't want to do it. I was disappointed that they didn't, but you know, they spoke. Now, I don't know what the ramifications are for us, one day after they tell us no, to then bow our neck and say, "Well, we've been working on this a while, we're going to continue down the road." I'm not going to tell you that I know it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but it bothers me that this is the way, this is the situation that we've got. I don't know the way out of this. I don't know the ramifications, if we don't do it. It bothers me. I just, it just bothers me. I don't like it. I mean, thousands of people voted, and what, 45 to 55% said, "Nope." And the idea that we're going to continue, there are going to be a whole lot of people who voted that way, saying, "Well, there they go again." I mean, it's because they get this from the federal government, they get it from the state, with a bridge to nowhere, they get it with, you know, all kinds of things that, quote, "government does to them," unquote. And they just spoke, and then we turn around and do something. It just, I'd scream, excepted it hurts your ears.
Your Honor.
Okay, I think Floyd was next, and then Bill.
My just question I would have, one of the timing of the amendment to the resolution. Is that open-ended time, or is it within six months, or a year? I don't know what "everything possible" means.
Could I step in on, from the legally standpoint? It's an expression of intent. It is a good face expression that you intend to do, to try to preserve it. You're not, it's not binding on you, you can buy four votes, you can change your direction at any time, just as you can even with an ordinance. But if the wording, if other wording would make you more comfortable, of course.
So, the focal point is, it's our intent to acquire and do everything we can to preserve or move the structure, as opposed to purchase and destroy.
Right. And I don't think, I don't think it's crucial to your discussion to say everything possible. I mean, you could say, express your intent to preserve, or try to save the structure.
Bill?
Rich, I guess my answer is, we don't know why people voted no. We've heard lots of anecdotal comments, that some would like to vote on separate stations. Some think it's too much money. Some think that we should have it designed first. I can't look at the no votes and say, "Nobody wanted us to build a new fire station downtown where it is now." I can't, there's no way I can come to that conclusion. So, the vote, for me, it doesn't factor into this. What I have to do is connect the dots. We've known for a long time that we need a new fire station. We know that this building won't last forever. Is it going to be built next year, 10 years, 20 years, when we're all dead? I don't know. But you can bet that a new station will have to be built at some time. We also know that this is the best location for it. Now, how do we know that? Because of the discussions, the studies. I mean, this is my fifth year on council. Before that, I was three years on the Public Safety Commission. So, I've talked about this, and been involved in it for eight years. So, if you know we need a station, and if we know this is the best location for it, then it becomes an issue of an opportunity to purchase the property. You kind of got to connect the dots. And if you wait the 10 years, the 20 years, and then it's like, "Okay, we need the station, and we need this location," but guess what? Now, the property's gone. This is just one of the steps, in my mind, in moving towards a logical conclusion on this.
Rich?
I understand exactly what you said, and I agree with a bunch of it. That doesn't keep me from going sideways about the dichotomy. People voted, and, you know, if this was two months after, you know, if we have some other indication, that, well, okay, yeah, they don't mind spending money on the fire station, or that it's a good idea, I think without input, we don't know why. And, you know, what I'm telling you is the problem I've got the middle of. And I don't know that there's a way out for me.
I understand what you're saying. The frustrating part is, you read the letters, the editors, and comments, and so forth, and so many of the questions that I heard posed, we all have answers to, because of eight years being involved in this process, or individually, you know, your involvement, the meetings, hours and hours and hours. We're lucky, I guess, in that we have that knowledge. It's tough, quite honestly, to answer all those questions in a short timeframe, unless you have a great big public forum, and try and get everything out on the table. So, yeah, it's, I understand your concerns. I guess for me, I can separate those two issues.
Bess?
I don't know if this helps either Counselor Kellum, but part of it is to think in terms of, what did we ask the voters in the election? And we asked them, "Are you willing to approve $20.3 million to build a new station?" That's what we asked. We didn't ask them, "Do you care if you build or buy land in order to prepare for a future station?" And we've purchased land before, without having that question answered by the public. I mean, we purchased a lot that John managed to get for us at very low cost. We've purchased, in the past, we've purchased land for a police station, knowing that we didn't have the money at the time to build the station, but recognizing that there would be a future need for it. So, in terms of, you know, what was voted on, it was a very specific question, and we know the answer to that question now. And I think, you know, you go back to the drawing board, and there's been suggestions about perhaps putting together some kind of a citizens' panel, to talk about what a future plan might look like. But whatever plan is going to happen sooner or later, you know, you're going to probably...
We're going to need footprint, yeah. I understand, I understand all that. But when I take a shower, I see the scars. You know?
Well, I think we've all got them.
Yeah, Floyd?
For me, in part, having been involved in several land purchases for governmental agencies, I think we have to look at an issue that we have willing sellers, and that's not always the case. If there is a willing seller, and they've been negotiating with us, and we have a potential use, identified use, and that willing seller, we can come to an agreement, I think that's a long-term advantage. If we miss that opportunity, then that willing seller may be liquidating that property to another use, which then could preclude activities down the road. While I understand Rich's frustration, I also have that, but I think, for me, it's overridden by the fact that we do have a willing seller, and that footprint, or that those parcels, will fit into the ultimate, whether it's next year, five years, 10 years. And having gone through the number of years that Bill referenced, you know, we looked at a lot of parcels downtown, and trying to find a different place. We didn't have willing sellers. There are probably better parcels that would meet the need of a fire station. But the people didn't want to sell them, and this council and other councils have not expressed a desire to use eminent domain to acquire them. And I agree with that. I would much prefer to negotiate with a willing, arms-length seller than use eminent domain. So, I guess I'm falling inside the fences, we incrementally take the steps... take the steps necessary to secure the land that preserves our options for the future.
I understand.
And I know that will probably anger some, but that's why we get paid the $110 a month.
Oh, it's $147.61.
Only if you get reimbursed for that stuff. Our base pay's $110.
Yes?
I agree with Rich, to where, and, and everyone else, too, you know. Don't want to go against the voters. Voters said, "No, we don't want to spend that much money," and I think Wes made that a very good point. This purchase of the property has been in the works for a long time. It's, and that's not what was on the ballot. It's, yes, it is maybe melded together in the long run, but right now, we know that with the downtown, that this is the best location for it. That is what the designers, or, or the people who have actually looked into this, said this is the best location, and yes, we have willing sellers at a, you know, a, a good price. And so, I don't think this is, at least, my feeling is, this isn't what the voters were voting on, because I, too, am very, how can you say it? Basically, we heard what the voters said, but this is on a different plane. We need to have the property, maybe it is that we do a smaller one, or whatever, or maybe we don't, but in preparation, we've got the opportunity, and I think since it's not just something that we cooked up overnight, this has been in the process a long time. There've been a lot of information on us. So, I think that's my feeling, is that, you know, it's, it's just an opportunity that we have as a council to secure a place whenever it does happen.
It's a good point. And also, we need to think that, you know, the voters had denied spending tax dollars, but these, purchasing of the station is coming from our settlement proceeds, which was not a tax imposed on the taxpayers. So, those were proceeds dollars. So, you counsel, you have a motion on the floor, and it also includes to be able to seek a relocation of the garage. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good job. You got us some good deals on some of those parcels. Okay, next is a resolution on page 34, and this one is for authorizing the use of litigation settlement proceeds to pay property tax on the Timber Ridge property acquired by the city on August 15th. And this property was acquired because it went into a foreclosure, and so, this ends up being, was it 90 some acres? Was it?
I'm sorry, I don't have the exact acreage figure in front of me. Stuart, actually, was the one who would normally be speaking to this. He unfortunately had a death in the family, and is, is out of town. But as you recall, this is the property that we received, actually, a deed in lieu of foreclosure. It was the security that was used for a local improvement district that funded the road improvements that were necessary for the Timber Ridge School. And part of that is that we discovered that we have to pay property taxes for the past. We do not have to pay them in the future. And we did not, we did not have a designated source of revenue to do that. Obviously, this is money that, when the property sells, would go back to, back into the settlement proceeds.
All right. Counsel, questions?
Wes, is this, is this one-year taxes? Do you know? Is that this year's?
I believe so. I think, that's my understanding, but I'm not-
I thought I looked at it, and everything was paid up to 2000, through 2012.
It was a condition that, that all taxes that were then due at the time of the transfer. But because of the date, that means taxes were still due, they weren't yet owing, so that's how we got stuck with them. But all the, this is only for the one year.
One year, all right. Okay, all right. There's a resolution on page 34.
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, Floyd?
When, when we talked about the acceptance of the parcel in lieu of the liens, I think I asked that we schedule this for discussion at some near-future date, about how do we move, put this property back on to a marketing scheme? And I would like to make sure that that's on our agenda, not later than the end of the first quarter of 2014. Because I don't, I personally do not think we ought to be holding on to this land. I think we ought to be trying to move it, recover our investment, put that money back in the settlement funds.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, counsel, you've got adoption of the consent calendar. It's kind of a long one this time. Is there any items to be pulled off this evening? If not, oh, here's one.
Item E.
Item E? Or, what'd you say?
E, as in Edward.
That's not a point.
Which is that? Is that the radios?
Oh, no, that one's not, that one's not the consent calendar. Has to be a number for consent calendar. That's the next item after consent calendar.
Is, is that the radios?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now item E. You wanted to make a comment?
The person who's been nominated may be eminently qualified. My big concern, and I'm going to vote no on it simply because of this one issue, is if you look at the application, it looks like the person just basically likely dismissed our application process, and just wrote, "Not applicable, not applicable, not applicable" on the entire back page. And I don't think that's acceptable.
Right, I'd like Ann to come forward, because I didn't end up seeing the application on this, and this is the one that's the Community Development Commission. I asked Stacy Bostrom from Citizens Bank if she had any, one that lived in the city limits that would be able to be on, that would be interested in being on this committee, so.
I have to admit, I wrote "not applicable" because the commission's members for this specific commission had specific roles they were supposed to fill. So, rather than applying through a process where you're selecting from many, and, and people needed to make the case that, pick me because we were picking somebody that had the financial background, and just for, for streamlining it, I had just, we, you know, we, we want you for this reason, and just had done that myself. Sorry, I, I did that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Did you fill out the application?
No, no, I just, the information we needed was, was really more basic than, as if they were applying for some of our different commissions. And so, to streamline getting those applications back from all of those commissioners, I had scanned one and wrote out, you know, "We just, we need these sections. This section is an applicable, because we know you're filling a financial slot, or a, in, in one of the, the specific slots on that commission."
And what we found on several people, we were trying to seek for this, because they had to be a part of, from a financial institution, everybody had to get the okay from their corporate to end up being on the committee. Some kind of thought, "Well, maybe it could be a conflict." And so, Stacy was wonderful in being able to, you know, find one of her staff members to be able to apply. And mostly, some that wanted, didn't live in the city limits, so we, you know, needed to make sure they lived in the city limits, but.
That doesn't show in here.
Um, no, it doesn't. They, they can opt to have their address, not be, it'll be on our regular packets that we get, but it's not on public records.
Says they live in Ward III.
Yeah, they live in Ward III.
That felt this for a long time. We just have to know a little bit about people on our boards, committee commissioners.
I agree.
Yeah, it, you know, and, and normally, yes, we do. This is just a different situation with these new community development commissions that are, have to follow the guidelines of who's on the committee with the, you know, with, under the CDBG grant funding.
So, are these, this was not put out for many people to apply? It was, you know?
No, this, this, this started as, remember, you already, the council said who you wanted as the makeup for this commission. So, it was certain expertise that was for, to be as membership. And then we went out and seeked the members, and we got everyone that was pretty much a part of the overall CDBG plan that we had, under the task force piece to that. But we didn't have, well, except we did have the one person from financial institution, Bill, but he could not, he had switched banks and was not able to be on the committee, so.
Well, I still, I agree with Ray. I think it's, and Dick, it's, it's just kind of like, to put on here "not needed," to me is just kind of circumventing the whole thing. You know, I mean, I understand where you need the financial person, but why not have them fill out the whole thing, instead of just "not needed"? I mean, that really struck me funny, too. I thought, "What do you mean, 'not needed'?"
Call the game, if you wish, but it's just a basic application. It's not rocket science to fill out an application.
Yeah, you know, like, what do they want to do for the committee? I mean, what, you know, do they, do they have an agenda? I mean, you know, I mean, I know, it's, like you say, it's kind of game.
They, we asked to find somebody to be a part of a financial institution. And so, they, this person wanted to be, you know, Courtney seemed very open to want to be, you know, part of the community on the, the email that I had back and forth with her. But when it came to the application, it's not down.
What, I mean, why not? I mean, it, it, it's such a little thing.
Well, but like Ann said, she didn't think it would be applicable, because we were seeking to have somebody on this commission. Instead, it's not a part of our broad boards and commissions that we go out annually, and then we, we look at applications and be able to kind of make decisions on who we felt would be that good fit. So, this is just a different situation.
We're seeking other people, we're seeking people to go on, on all the commissions. I mean, we seek them out most times. Sometimes they'll give their, you know, so I'm thinking, "Do we need to do this today, or can we just have her, I mean, fill it out, just, just to keep consistent with the program?" Just.
Yeah, Floyd?
I'm, I'm sorry if my, if it slipped my memory, but I, I remember when we established the criteria for the makeup of the commission. But have, did we require the others to submit applications, and if we approved those? Or have they just been by profession selected?
They weren't, there was no application filled out on those, and that was selected, and then the council ratified all those, those names.
So, that's a piece I'm not remembering. We did ratify the balance, but not this?
You, you ratified all of the other membership, and I can't remember if we did bill or not. Or, no, we put it on hold that night. We said we don't have a commitment on the financial institution.
That may be in one of the council meetings I missed.
And we said it would be coming back to the council for somebody to fill that slot. But we thought we had a person, which was Bill Higbee. He had to back out.
So, when those were reviewed, were their application forms with them?
No.
I, I think that was a mistake.
I do, too, yeah.
I think we can identify the professions that we want people to be involved in, in order to get the skill and the expertise. But I think we need some information, and I think the public needs some information about who sets on those boards and commissions. And so, you know, I'm not going to go back in time and make a deal about what we've done in the past. But I think, fill the remaining one, I think we need to, because I would like to know what are the skills. The fact that somebody's worked in one profession for 14 years does not necessarily meet my requirements for skills. To me, I don't know that.
Yeah, so, Mark?
Well, and, and I'm not speaking to the process, but just trying to give some perspective in my memory here. With the, the Community Development Commission, time was of the essence, because we needed to get that commission set up in order to make some decisions on how to spend the, the CDBG money. And so, as I recall, this was a non-normal process for setting the, the commission up. And then, those commission, how long they serve are staggered, and as those commission positions come up, they'll go through the, our, what is currently our normal process. So, it was done somewhat because of the time constraint that we were under, in order to get the CDBG stuff up. Again, I don't speak to whether that was the right process or not, but that was the perspective of, I think, some of the thinking of why it was done, as it was done.
And each, and part of this, when, when we had the task force, we haven't had applications on the task force. Task force is any of them, they've all been appointed members. And so, we just carried over the task force and filled those into the slots of this Community Development Commission. So, that's why none of those members had filled out the slot, you know, had filled out the applications. But now, when they come back to the council for renewal, you know, for when their, their terms expire, then yes, it will be filling out the, the same application process on that.
I just think that was a mistake, and we should have had that, at least in terms of documentation for the public record.
And, and hindsight, yes, you know, we could have, you know, we can't.
We could ask them to complete a form, sure.
But, but it does kind of hold up this one application.
But it doesn't hold up the functioning of the commission. Because that's one member. One member does not negate a form. We could ask that this form be completed, and we could ask that the people that were appointed in totality could go back and fill out a form for having on file. And I think that would be wise for us to do that.
I agree. So, so should I ask the current appointed members to fill a complete application out? We were under a timeline. I hadn't received all the applications back, and because we were trying to just make the agenda packet, I talked with staff, and we thought we could do a spreadsheet that filled in some background information, where they worked, what were they were in, at what position they were filling. And so, because we had that information, and that's what was in the packet, we decided not to get that.
I think we, we have people of goodwill who have agreed, blessedly, to serve on a committee that requires a lot of work, and they aren't going to get anything out of it.
Let's not kick them.
I am quite certain that they will be more than happy to fill out a brief application and get it back, so I think we should.
Yeah, I can ask them all to have a detailed application filled out, because the other commission members, you know, filled out the same level of information.
If they want to blame somebody, blame me for bringing it up tonight.
Well, blame me for streamlining the process.
So, do you want to hold off on Courtney, or ratify it, and then have all of them fill out the application together?
Including Courtney again.
Pardon me?
Including Courtney again.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. Bring her back to our first meeting in, in December.
Well, we have a meeting next week, if we could do, probably.
No, so, the question I asked is, do you want to have ratified Courtney tonight to be on the commission, and then include having everybody return on application?
I would.
I'm seeing Ray nod, but I'm seeing you.
I would have no problem doing that.
Okay, so.
I would. I think we could hold it, have her fill it out. There may or may not be anything we want to talk about. The others, we've already ratified those. They're done. We just want to document for the record what their expertise is, and what the information is. And I probably will not have a problem once we see the completed one here. But I can't prejudge that.
Well, I need, we need, I need to have some nods on council direction. Do you want to ratify tonight, or do you want to hold off and have applications in?
I will not move to do that.
To do which? I had, just ask two questions. So, which?
I said I will not move to approve.
To approve this one?
I will not.
I think we just bring them all back.
All right, okay. Then Ann will ask her to fill it out and bring it back.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Glad you were here tonight, so. Yep, thank you. Okay? All right, next is police computers. And, is that?
I'm, I'll go ahead.
Captain?
I'll save Captain, I'm just being, unless we need him. The, the hike up to the front. I think you have a memorandum that explains that this is a scheduled purchase. It was included in the budget process to replace computers at the police department. As the council is aware, annually, we set money aside out of our operating budgets to be able to purchase replacement equipment, computer equipment. There is more than sufficient resource in the police department's account to purchase these computers. I think the council's also been made aware in the past that we are changing our operating platform and the existing computers in the police department. Some of them are not going to be able to accommodate that, so this seemed like an opportune time to do it. It's also the scheduled time to replace our mobile, mobile data terminals. I think Counselor Kellum, you had mentioned in one of your ride-alongs that we, that officers were having some issues with the MDTs. And so, again, we're hopeful that this replacement, scheduled replacement- replacement, scheduled replacement will be able to, to make them work better, so.
Question. Computers we're getting rid of, are we assured that they have been completely and totally wiped before they go anywhere?
Captain Heinrichs is nodding at the back. Yeah, we have to be very, very careful about how we dispose and our IT folks are very much on top of that.
Right, Floyd?
Just for the record, a lot of organizations do not have a equipment reserve to fund routine replacements and so they wait until they, they need them and then it comes along as one gigantic annualized budget hit. So you take a hundred thousand dollar hit in one year as opposed to putting five or ten thousand dollars away over a time period to replace them. The city of Albany has selected to use an equipment reserve and in many cases we have, our rolling stock is also that way. That's not true with a lot of organizations and what that does is allow us to normalize our operating cost on an annualized basis and avoid those large spikes. So I appreciate having equipment reserves, both for disposable equipment like computers and also rolling stock. And we do have that on a very limited basis with building reserves.
Okay, and what would the council like to do with this item?
Move for approval for purchase of equipment. Second.
Right, any discussion, more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppo, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Glad to see we're moving into Windows 8. Boy, I have had it for a while and I sure struggle trying to get attachments. And, okay, let's see, we have a carryover item from Monday's meeting and that's the airport. And Mark, did you have some information for us on that fence?
Yeah, well, I have, have some maps here, some pictures that I'll pass out and if the council wishes, I do have enough copies of these to distribute at least a few to the members of the Airport Advisory Commission as well as the council. Mayor, you'd asked for a map showing the location with the riparian zone, also any sort of floodplain information. That's what this first handout is that you're receiving is a map of the airport area. You see Cox Creek and that, kind of the yellow or beige shaded area is the riparian zone around Cox Creek and how that impacts airport property. The red line is, the red dashed line is the fence location proposed west of Cox Creek. The green line with the little green Xs, that's the existing chicken wire fence. And the blue dashed line is where there's existing chain link fence that is going to be replaced by this new chain link fence. So I bring that for your information and discussion if you'd like. I have a picture of something, you'd asked for a picture of what the fence might look like. This is not exactly how the fence looks because it'll have actually a top rail on it. I do have a copy of the standard for the fence that's going in. This is off the actual construction plans for your information. So that, that gives you at least an idea of what the fence is going to look like. I also had a conversation with, I had a message from Counselor Collins and a conversation with Counselor Kellum about the fence location. And one idea was if the fence is located west of Cox Creek, that the council might entertain some sort of resolution reaffirming use of the airport property for airport uses with the exception of, of some previously agreed uses such as overflow parking and use up by the fairgrounds. I have a draft resolution for council to look at and see if that meets with, with your approval, if that is something you'd like to do, something to look at and mark up. So we're, I think at this point, staff's recommendation is to place the fence west of Cox Creek. You've heard from the Airport Advisory Commission that their desire is for the fence to be east of Cox Creek along Price Road. I'm happy to discuss it. Any further with any, any more information you'd like, but with that, I'd open it up for questions right now.
I've got one. The blue dot, as I'm recalling, the, the holes for the new fence are pretty close to the, where, well, where the, where the blue dashes are, it looks like where the fence is now. The new fence, according to the post holes, would be about this far away from that. Is that?
The new fence will actually move east closer to Price Road. Correct. So it's enclosing a little more of the airport property.
Right. That's, that's what we had discussed. Ken, you seen? Are there any of these left?
There should be several left.
So Mark, if the council decides to put it close to the creek, on the west side of the creek or east side of whichever, since these are FAA funds, if we find it's not a good fit, are we stuck with the fence in that location forever or can it be moved?
The fence can be moved. I think there are some limits to what the FAA would fund. If we just said we don't like the fence and we want to move it, that would probably be a hard sell to the FAA. I don't know all the exact rules. However, if there is either development in that area or some other justification, my understanding is the FAA would at least entertain relocation of the fence to accommodate improvements on the airport or other justifiable needs for security and things like that.
And so is, are we in a big time crunch, though, with the FAA to be able to get the fence into this locate, I mean, to be able to get it installed? Do we have a timeline that we have to have the project completed?
I don't, I don't think the timeline with the FAA is really a big issue. We do have a schedule. I don't know the exact deadline, but we'd have some time. The issue at hand really is we have a contract that we've let for this work, so we have a contractor out there. And if we delay the decision on what to do with the fence and then ask them to come back after they're done with all their other work, then you're, you're looking at a change order for remobilization and that sort of thing.
I guess what's unfortunate, I mean, and I know the way the process is taken, you know, and we even awarded the contract for FAA, we just didn't really know what it was going to look like and really didn't know the exact kind of location on it. Visuals is always great to be able to really see what is, what is this going to look like, you know, for this type of a project. But also it would have been nice to have citizens more aware because there hasn't been anything even in the paper on this, knowing this is what's proposed, you know, next to Timberland Park. So when you've got a public use like this to public properties, because the airport is public, you know, it's not a private, you know, property, too, it'd be nice to have more of the citizen involvement and really being a part of where this location and fencing was. It's, you know, it's, to me, a fence, looking at, looking at this, it looks like the airport is going to be, it looks like a prison yard fenced, in my opinion. So it's not a very, you know, a pleasing fence and mostly when it's up against our beautiful Timberland Park. So that's the part that's really, really disappointing to me.
You're on it.
Yeah. Rich and then Bessie.
The place where the fence is the closest, there is a chain link fence within, like this far away. I mean, it's, it is just a little, you know, that much closer to the.
But it doesn't look like that.
Well, it looks like that only shorter, you know.
It, it doesn't have the.
It doesn't have the barbed wire on top of it, that's true, but.
So there is actually, I mean, I haven't, I drive out there a lot, hadn't looked that close. I appreciate Hossel taking a picture of it and I pulled it offline, so it is setback more and it is a regular chain link fence. So we can just keep this a part of our discussion and there's a picture I'll just pass down on each side of the council. But this one here, we'll have to pass it back and forth because I only printed the one copy. It shows how close, it shows how close the fence will be going to the sidewalk on that one. And I mean, and that's the thing to look, you've got to visualize. This is going to be our street scape along Price Road, so. Yep, Bessie, then Bill.
I was going to say, okay, so Mark, you've got the red line where it's, where basically the contractor is going to put the holes in the fence, right? That's the red.
Red line represents where staff proposes the fence go.
Right, but I don't see any colored line or anything to where, like, the airport commission said that they would like it to be. That would kind of help?
They would like it to essentially just follow Price Road so the fence would, would be installed right along the western boundary of Price Road. Since that was a landmark on the, the drawing, I didn't show it there, but it, it would be right along Price Road.
Okay. And so has, has the contractor continued digging?
The contractor has, except in this location in question. They have enough work, at least through this afternoon. I was out there about noon. There was no one working in that area. They haven't done anything with the holes there and I'd actually asked them to hold off until this meeting tonight, after this meeting tonight.
So I guess my question is, and maybe the airport commission can help, so if we go along Price Road and they want to do like overlapping parking like they do now, would there be a gate there or, you know, and, and so it basically, they could, it could still be used for park overflow or whatever, but still keep the airport property intact?
The, the overflow parking really wouldn't be impacted with, if that fence is up against Price Road or along the red line, it would still be accessible through a gate.
No, I'm not talking about the red line. I'm talking about the line that's not there that the airport commission wants.
Correct. If, if the fence is put along Price Road as the airport commission would like, that would not impact, it wouldn't wipe out the, the parking.
Bill?
I noticed where the red line is, it appears to be on, on the edge or maybe it was intended to be on the edge of that 50-foot setback for the riparian area.
Correct.
Can the fence be placed closer to the creek or not?
Cannot be placed in that riparian area without going through a pretty extensive permitting process.
So I don't see how you could even put it along, on the east side of the creek. It looks like at least half of that area is riparian. And the other issue is if it is on the other side of that creek, you're going to have two creek crossings with the fence. And I don't know that that has been designed or, or how that would be accomplished.
It, it hasn't been designed. What would happen would be, that area would be left with no fence for the current time being and we would look to go through a design and permit process for the crossing. That's a similar situation we have down at the far south end where we have to hold back from the creek. So this project isn't going to extend a fence across Cox Creek on the very south end, just on the tail end of where you see the red dashed line. But that's a project for the future to look at, okay, what are our options for securing the property at that creek crossing? It is, it's a challenge on how do you balance dealing with flood flows, dealing with the environmental issues and yet having security. It, it's a challenge, but that's, that's not included in this project. So any creek crossing that would be required to relocate the fence to the east side of Cox Creek, where the airport commission asks, would be done at a future date.
So just to repeat my comment, I don't understand how you could have fencing on, on half of that area on the east side that's in the riparian area.
That would be a challenge. We'd have to go down and pull, pull exact measurements down there. You know, this is an overlay on GIS, which is fairly accurate, but.
I understand. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Dick?
Yeah, this, this view here shows airplanes down here by the, that used to be, or maybe still is a restaurant.
Yes.
Do airplanes go down there now?
Yes.
How are they going to get there if there's a fence along the creek? Or where, where is the fence going to go? Is it going to go?
There is a, there's a.
Around the restaurant or what?
There's a bridge. There's a bridge across the, the creek and that bridge is not getting fenced off. And that, that's where I said, we've got to come back at a future project and look, are there ways we can improve the security across that creek and still maintain the ability for those planes to go down towards that restaurant there with the former swept wing, the Chinese restaurant.
I kind of wonder if you got a, what is this, a 10, 10-foot cyclone fence, barbed wire on top?
Seven, seven-foot cyclone fence with one foot of, of barbed wire on top.
Chance of airplanes catching their wheels on a fence if it's down there toward the end of the runway?
I suppose there is.
For wings?
Hey, seems like this whole fence thing is a kind of a waste of time to me. Does the FAA insist on the barbed wire and do they, do they insist on?
The FAA does insist on the, the design. I asked if the fence could be lowered to, to six feet and I was informed that the FAA has standards that we have to follow.
I'm tempted to say, let's just stay with the chicken wire, but I guess, or too late to do that, I guess.
Well, an option would be not to fence this area at all. We'd have to go back to the contractor and there would probably be a.
I know, I can't make that suggestion. I would like to make that suggestion, but I know I can't.
But can we put it on where the existing fence line is anyway, the chicken wire line? Can we put this fence down that line so it's not so close to Cox Creek?
I believe we could do that by FAA rule, but, you know, that, that doesn't add that additional overflow parking area, but, I mean, that is an option.
Well, it would be, it'd make it better for the overflow parking because if it's along the green line, the existing, so when it comes to the overflow parking in there, because now if we're going to be putting RVs there during the Art and Air Festival, who's going to want to park there when they've got a prison yard fence between them and the Cox Creek? So it's not exactly a real appealing campsite to, to stay at. And then, being closer to the creek, who's, who's going to be maintaining this space? Who's going to be weeding around the cyclone fence? Is that going to be burden put on parks or is the airport going to be maintaining and weeding around the cyclone?
Well, I, and is Ed here? He could correct me if I'm wrong. I believe currently parks maintains along Cox Creek up to the chicken wire fence. Is that correct, Ed? Ed and I have not discussed what would happen with the mowing and maintenance between the chicken wire fence and a fence that's located on the west side of Cox Creek.
I just can't imagine it being real desirable as a space for parks to be able to use, you know, for that overflow parking and mostly for, for camping. And when it comes to the big motorhome shows also, they're, they're not going to want to sit between their RVs between that and Cox Creek and next to this fence, but.
Sure, I think I would take exception to that because, look at the number of RVs that are parked in the back of the Expo Center. That lot is full and they've got, the Expo Center is surrounded by a security fence. That, I don't think that argument holds water.
Is it this type of fence?
I don't know the exact heights of it, but I know they're internal to the back of the Expo and it's on the fence to the north. Counselor Kellum and I went out there and looked. I think moving the red line, the proposed fence to the green line exacerbates the concern that the airport commission has. On the other hand, we looked, what's really going to happen with the property between the east boundary of the creek and Price Road? It has no basic functional use. I mean, it's so tight that you're not going to use it for anything except maybe some overflow parking during the peak conditions out there. I belong to a local service club that we do the parking for the Art and Air Festival and I've manned that area down there. And I'll tell you, when the Art and Air Festival is at full bore, there are cars between the High Point of the Bank and the sidewalk on that side of Price Road. I think that, I, while I understand the position of the airport commission and I I think that, while I understand the position of the Airport Commission, and I understand the problem we had with the communications and the fence alignment, if I'm looking for a functional requirement or a functional use on the east side of the creek, I find none with the exception of what we already have with the Art and Air Festival. Putting the fence on the red line, fences off from the top of the bank, still allows for the overflow parking, it's still part of the airport property whole, and if we adopt the resolution that Rich and I kind of talked about, and I asked Mark to take a look at, it puts on record that this council says everything to the west of Price Road is for the aviation-related activities, with the exception of the existing overflow parking issues we have with parks, and the IGA that we have with the Expo Center. And any other requested action has to be focused through the Airport Commission to be their advice to us, who we are the ultimate decision-makers. That give them that level of security that's down on paper, and it meets some functional test, because in the life of me, I could not imagine any use between the creek and the sidewalk that would be aviation-related. And by doing this, it accommodates some of your concern about not having a fence right up against Price Road. It preserves the overflow parking area. It is a line of demarcation for aviation use, but we memorialize the exceptions.
And it gives more security for the parking during Art and Air.
Oh, I think that leaving it where it is, and adoption of the resolution, I think it's the best we're gonna pull out of this issue that we're into right now. I don't support backing away from the FAA project. We have master plans. Our master plan's identify long-term projects. The FAA funds the majority of those on a 90-10 basis. And if we start backing away from master plan projects with FAA, I think we run a chance of scuttling future FAA projects. So be careful what you ask for, it may come to the back to bite you.
So, I'm still kinda trying to grasp the justification, why, because if it's a security fence, why do you need to have it up to Cox Creek, and you can't just keep it on the existing green line? What's the difference? You've still got the security of the airport by a fence, no matter where the location is?
I think part of it is that that area would be future hangars, and you might as well enclose that area now and delineate it as airport property. If and when hangars are built, you don't have the additional fence of, additional cost of moving a fence.
I really think there would end up being hangars over on that side, even though it's in the plan, with the flood.
Back when we did the master plan several years ago, and I've forgotten how many, ten years or so ago, I can't remember exactly what that area was identified for. It may have been hangars, or it may have been a south apron, like the north apron we have now at the back of the Expo Center. So the planes can come down, east side taxiway, pull in there on that apron, and then use the functional requirements over at Timberland Park, just as though the north end is for the Expo Center. That area was always identified for aviation use.
It is also, we're updating the master plan, and in that master plan, it is shown for aviation use and development.
That was the point of my discussion when I was Mark's predecessor. I had with Dave Clark, who was Ed's predecessor, 'cause he wanted to use that parcel in the parks' master plan, and I said, no, that is aviation-related, that's airport property. It does not belong to be part of the Timberland Park master plan.
And, Mark, did you find out on the maps, it seemed like when I was looking, this was where the flood plain is, along there?
Well, interestingly, there is, the flood plain, the Hundred Year Flood Plain does not show going outside the top of bank of Cox Creek here, anywhere east of I-5. So, really, the controlling issue here is that riparian buffer.
Yeah.
That's the yellow colored parts that were...
Correct.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Okay. And this is the resolution that was handed out to you?
When, you know, for the advantage of the folks who may be watching, the people in the audience that don't have copies of it, I might ask our city attorney to read the resolution, so that everybody knows what we're voting on.
I gave Mr. Castor my thought here, courtesy of the mayor. Resolution affirming the use of the Albany Municipal Airport property, whereas the City of Albany Council desires to affirm their intention to preserve airport property west of Price Road for airport use, and whereas some airport property is located outside of the existing and proposed security fencing, and whereas there are events at Timberland Park that may require additional parking, and whereas in the past, the area identified in Exhibit A has been used for temporary event parking, and whereas the city has an intergovernmental agreement with Lynn County for the temporary use of the area identified in Exhibit B, now therefore be it resolved that the airport property west of Price Road be reserved for the full and exclusive use of the airport, and be it further resolved that the property identified in Exhibit A may be used for overflow parking as long, I'm sorry, as may be approved by the Airport Commission and/or the City Council. And be it further resolved that the property identified in Exhibit B may be used by the Lynn County for an Expo Center as outlined by the existing intergovernmental agreement, which was executed by the City of Albany and Lynn County on May 24th, 1995. Be it further resolved that any other use of the airport property identified above is subject to the approval of the Airport Advisory Commission and/or City Council.
Okay, there's been a motion, and a second? There was, yeah.
Which one?
Any discussion?
Rich has a question on instruction.
Question, do we need the "and/or" of Airport Commission and/or City Council? Can we just say "and"?
No, you really need the "or," because otherwise you are ceding to a non-elected body control over city property.
I understand.
But the full intent is that the Airport Advisory Commission offers their recommendation, their review and recommendation to this body for final decision-making. We can't delegate that decision-making.
Yeah, I think with this resolution, that it's kind of a compromise, and I'm glad you guys came up with this, because it at least makes everyone aware that it is still airport, basically for airport activities, and yet can be used for other, so that, with that, I would be in favor of that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I do, I think the Airport Advisory Commission and the council is owed an apology by me for the way this matter was handled. It wasn't handled well, as far as a process standpoint. I believe the technical solution is correct, but the process was broken, and that came as a surprise to the Airport Advisory Commission and caused much of this issue. And if we had handled it better, I think people would have been a little less upset, and we could have worked through it in a more productive way. So I apologize both to the Airport Advisory Commission and to the council.
All right, thank you, Mark. Okay, anything else on that? And that the fence will be put through as what's the construction proceed board, or what the construction... All right. Okay, next is, city attorney has an item to bring forward, updating about the, what he found out about the marijuana dispensaries?
Well, at the last council meeting, you asked me specifically to do some investigation about the city's options vis-à-vis permitting or excluding marijuana dispensaries in conjunction with House Bill 3460. At the outset, I want to make it clear, I'm not making any comments on the merits one way or the other. I'm trying to do specifically what you asked me to do, which is tell you what the law is. And I'll tell you that the law, as it is made up, not just as a statute, but of interpretations of the statute, is a moving target that is evolving as we speak. Under the marijuana dispensary laws, the state still has several more months to develop all the final regulations, and it won't be until March 15th that applications for dispensary permits are actually being issued. So we're in a time period where state agencies are still writing their implementary rules to deal with the statute. That's going to make a difference, how it is interpreted with a companion piece of legislation that has been unintentionally thrown into the mix. So, this gets a little complex. On your dais is an opinion of legislative council that came out yesterday. So I highlight for you again, that is a moving target. I don't suggest that you read it all now. I think that you take it home and take a look at it, because I don't think there's an action that you need to take now. This opinion, first of all, is written by the lawyer for the legislature. Now, that makes a difference on how their, what their perspectives are. The lawyer for the legislature is, to the extent he can legitimately say so, going to try to say that the legislature has meant what they said, and what they said is the law, and it should be given effect. The attorneys for the League of Oregon Cities, who tend to promote government flexibility, have a different take. They're both good lawyers, they both give opinions. The legislative council opinion, which I think needs to be carefully considered, basically comes down hard for the position that the state has preempted local government's ability to regulate marijuana dispensaries, and that you are precluded, certainly in their mind, from prohibiting them by a license restriction, by a land use law, or otherwise. And they say that it might be possible for some incidental regulation, as long as that regulation does not have the effect of working an unworkable burden on the ability of the dispensaries to be formed. There's a companion law, which is what I told you about, which is really a kind of a silly problem, and it's referred to in this opinion when you look at it. And that's Senate Bill 863. Senate Bill 863 was a bill that was adopted by the legislature, signed by the governor, intended to prevent primarily counties, but it embraces all local governments, but it was for counties, to prevent counties from adopting regulations, putting new rules, separate rules on genetically modified plants that are grown in the county. Well, the county, the state wrote the law in a sloppy way, and the definitions of agricultural products is broad enough in the judgment of legislative council to embrace marijuana and marijuana dispensaries. The reason that's important, and this is, you guys can wave your hands and tell me when your eyes are glazing, and this is getting too down in the weeds, I mean, the...
Too down the weeds?
Wow.
I think that should have been singular instead of plural.
I'm not sure I'm gonna recover from that one. Anyway, legislative council says you can't regulate them. League of Oregon City's attorneys thinks you probably can, but it is unclear. City of Medford is going to take the position of trying to prohibit them by not issuing them business licenses. We, of course, don't have business licenses, so that same avenue is not available for you, even if you wish to take it, unless you want to adopt a business license scheme. City of Medford is certainly going to, I agree with the gentleman who spoke, it's going to be in the crosshairs, and there will likely be a judicial determination about whether or not cities have the right to adopt regulations of this type or not. It is difficult for me to know how that will turn out. If I were a betting man, I would be inclined to think that you can probably, without drawing litigation and without losing therefore, adopt regulations which not, which do not prevent dispensaries, but which supplement the state law. But if you were to take the approach of adopting, for example, a land use law, which made dispensaries unlawful in the city, it would certainly, in my judgment, draw a legal challenge. I think you have a good chance of prevailing ultimately, but I cannot be certain. The law is going to get clearer. As I mentioned before, the Health Division, or Department of Agriculture, beg your pardon, is tasked with drawing regulations about whether or not this GMO law is really broad enough to embrace marijuana. I don't think it is, and I think that they will write regulations that make it clear that it is not intended to cover that. So I think that problem will fall by the wayside. I think that there will be other attorneys, I know that there was an opinion that was going to be coming out at the end of the day today, I didn't see it, from League of Oregon City's council, as kind of their counterpoint to this. So both sides are sort of weighing in. The question really boils down to preemption, and let me explain, the Oregon Supreme Court has talked about preemption, and what they've basically said is, if you are a home-rule city, which most of you probably are familiar, we are a home-rule city, that we have the authority to adopt our own form of government, like the city manager form of government, and we have our own authority to adopt local laws and regulations that are on matters of primarily local concern. The law generally says that if the state wants to preempt a field, it has to do it in one of two ways. It either has to clearly say, it is our intent not to allow local regulation. That was done in the genetically modified foods or statute. The other way, it was not done in the dispensary law. The other way, the other restriction is that local government, even if there hasn't been that direct preemption, can't adopt laws that are in direct conflict with the state law. But you could, if there hasn't been a preemption, adopt laws that are supplemental. Let me give you an example. We have, in the state of Oregon, a complete regulatory scheme for liquor licenses. The state has a complete scheme for licensing bars, taverns, stores that sell all forms of alcohol. Much broader series of regulations than the dispensary law. But that does not preclude a city from determining that it wants to be a dry city and not allow alcohol. The city couldn't adopt a separate regulatory scheme and say, we're gonna, our standards for reviewing bars and taverns will be different than the state's, 'cause that would be in conflict. But I think that is an analogy one can make.
So they can still say we want to be a dry city?
Yes. So in a nutshell, the current weight of authority, which is probably from legislative council, says you can't regulate them, or you can't prohibit them. That is going to be judicially tested in southern Oregon. I think, and I'm not trying to suggest the final answer, but as I'm watching this moving target now, if I were to recommend a course of action today, I would say do nothing. And I would say, let another city fight this fight, and when the dust clears and a judicial determination has been arrived at, then you will know what you can and cannot do, and you can then do it. Another thing to consider is, the sense is, that there is going to be an initiative measure on the ballot within the next year to legalize recreational use of marijuana. If that measure passes, any attempts to regulate dispensaries are going to be moot. And so, I think you would, I don't think you should act tonight. I think you should let the process continue to evolve, let the state continue to do its rulemaking, see what shakes out. You're not gonna have dispensaries being licensed before the middle of March, and you can see where you are as we get closer to that date. If you decide that you want to attempt to prohibit them, I will give you an ordinance framework to do that, even without the necessity of adopting business licenses. But it will likely draw a legal challenge. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, questions?
So Jim, in terms of supplemental restrictions, without prohibiting the dispensary in the community, could we adopt regulations that deal with proximity to public education facilities or other amenities like that?
Well, the law already has regulations to deal with proximity to facilities of those type. And so you probably could not regulate in an area where the state has already specifically regulated. The general counsel for the legislature had a comment on that topic, let me see if I can find it. He said that it may be possible, though, for some types of local law to place a minor restriction on medical marijuana facilities that is sufficiently insignificant to avoid conflicting with the purposes and objectives of House Bill 3460. For instance, a local law that imposes special traffic control measures around medical marijuana facilities might not conflict with the purposes and objectives of House Bill 3460, as long as the measures do not unduly interfere with the operation of the facilities. And then they go on to note, however, that your ability to do anything is going to be contingent upon a determination that the genetically modified crop bill doesn't completely preclude everything. Traffic regulation was simply an example. So I think you could work with people such as the gentleman who spoke tonight, about trying to develop further rules... to develop further rules on how the businesses would be operated, so long as the rules were not designed to and did not have the effect of placing a significant burden on the ability of facilities to operate. I also don't think you would draw a challenge, because I think that, and I'm speculating here, but I think that the side of the argument, that is in support of dispensaries, would welcome local governments taking that approach as opposed to prohibition. So I think there is an opportunity to do that, will not draw fire, and will win even, and I believe it would be sustained even if it did draw fire. I mean, part of the goal, frankly, is, to some degree, you lose, even if you go to court and win, because you will spend a lot of time and a lot of money that you will likely not recover. You just never get your time back, and you seldom get your money back in those measures. So the best win is if you get what you think you need without the need to actually litigate something.
Other questions?
So paraphrasing, let the state run its course and see what it is.
Yes, and let, if the City of Medford wants to litigate over this, let them do it and piggyback on them to see what happens.
The League may even take a role in that as well.
I suspect that the League will work with the City of Medford, because the League's interest is properly in doing everything they can to preserve the discretion of local governments to regulate their cities. That's what the cities pay those folks to try to do.
And, but you also made the comment that, you know, the two young men that are trying to make this happen, they're trying to be right up front, if, and they're trying to say, help us make it work better, help us work with the police and the city to formulate regulations that will in fact possibly even be tougher than what some of the city, what some of the state regulations are, in order to make things work better.
Well, we're not going to be able to have regulations that are on the same, that are tougher than the state. We're going to have regulations to, we could have regulations where the state currently does not regulate. The state regulates who is eligible to get the license, we couldn't change that. The state regulates restrictions on the location of dispensaries relative to one another. We couldn't change that. But there are lots of details, signage, for example, that would be allowed for dispensaries. I don't recall seeing regulated in the law. That would be an area where the city could promulgate regulations, because signage limitations would not preclude the operation of a facility, and it is in an area where the state has not legislated. And that's merely an example that occurs to me now.
They'd have to be our regular sign regulations.
Well, but you could adopt.
Sign.
It's a, well.
Location and all that stuff.
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to opine tonight on what the sign regulations would look like. I'm merely trying to give an example that you have the authority to adopt regulations on areas where the state has thus far been silent.
Yes, and I would just add to what Jim has said, that it's going to be hard for us to work with folks on what might or might not work here in Albany, and so we have a better sense of the rules that are going to be established by the state for the licensing and operation of these facilities. I mean, a lot of the areas that we might have concerns about, the state may develop regulations that we're happy with or, or not. So I think it, you know, we can certainly talk to folks, but we're operating in a vacuum until we know what the rules are.
True, that's very true, but you've also stated that, as it currently stands, we have no way of knowing if there's any dispensaries currently happening, because we have no way of monitoring them. So if we can try and help formulate some of those processes to keep it above board, I think that'd be better than having it stay underground.
They're not legal yet, are they?
Yeah, they can't, there are no legal.
We know there, well, we.
If they're, if somebody's seven out there, they're probably going to go to jail right now.
I'm sure there are people selling marijuana, and we do actually respond to that. But as far as the rules for legal dispensaries, sure, you know, I, again, we're, I think we're open, but we can't tell people right now that, oh yeah, we think this is good or that's bad, until we know what the state's going to impose on them.
Jim, one thing you didn't identify is the conflict between the federal law and the state law, and even though the federal government has said they're not going to take specific issues, as I understand their position, what quandary does that put us into?
Well, it is addressed in Legislative Council's opinion, and I'm not going to try to completely paraphrase that tonight, but I mean, I want to suggest that you can go home and look at that, and we can even make the opinion available on the website or something if somebody wants to see it. It's available if you do any kind of search for it. Generally speaking, the state cannot force the city to take an action that is prohibited by federal law. But the dispensary law does not force the city to do anything. The state dispensary law could not, for example, say that the city must issue licenses. But the, according to Legislative Council's position, the city cannot use the federal, the argument of a federal disconnect as a justification for essentially disobeying a state legislative scheme. I mean, it's clearly muddy, but you know, we have other areas. For example, immigration law. We've had many years of the state, not just our state, but many states not enforcing federal immigration law. We rely on the Federals to do that, and there seems to be, you know, there's a disconnect, and there's a breakdown or discrepancy in that system from time to time. But the opinion of Legislative Council, and the weight of the law probably would be that the, certainly the state can't force you to violate federal law. There's cities in California that have fought this fight. City of Riverside has a case go up to the California Supreme Court, where through zoning regulation, they precluded marijuana dispensaries, even though they were allowed by state legislation, and that was affirmed in California. Will it be affirmed here if challenged? League thinks it will. I don't know whether it will or not, but I know that it was approximately a ten-year process in California. And unless you feel that there's a compelling need, well, I'm sorry, I don't mean to. That wasn't the question. So I don't know, Floyd. I don't know exactly where the line is, and it's going to be up to people in robes rather than lawyers in suits to tell you.
Is everyone in agreement to just see what happens, Medford and state law?
Well, and I'm happy to report back periodically if changes come in. There's going to be an opinion from League Council. I will see that that gets forwarded to all of you. If I become, I'm going to continue to keep my ear to the ground for changes, and I will report back to you. I suggest that I report back to you probably monthly about whether there are any changes, and you tell me when and if you want to do something.
Okay, sounds good.
I certainly support that, because I think it falls back. I think we have enough on our plate, we don't have to put this on the point of our spear.
Okay.
So in the meantime, what do people do who want to have a dispensary? Do they?
They follow the interpretation, the development of the state rules, the interpretation of the state law.
Find a place to do it and start doing it?
Well, there are whole, there are whole procedures in the state dispensary law about how they would go about being appropriately permitted, and they'll do that. And for the gentleman who spoke tonight, I think the starting point, if you want to talk to city folks, the people who are going to have the most direct involvement probably would be the police department, wouldn't you think?
And planning, because.
Police and planning, and I mean, talk to city staff folks, see, you know, I think that this is probably newer to us than it is to you, and therefore, no, no, I don't think they want a discussion, but I mean, I think if you would, if you want to get together with staff people and share your ideas, I'm sure that the staff people would react and tell you what they think, what they would anticipate the problems or opportunities would be. But certainly, the police department will have a stake in this, and I think that, if I could suggest, I think you could speak with Captain Hyrmish tonight in the back room to talk to him about any further discussions, and whether that's productive or not, I don't know.
Okay, all right. Counsel, okay, Ray?
Just an anecdotal, I think it's a little disingenuous and hypocritical of the feds to keep that the way they've got it set up, simply because they already grow it and mail it to people.
Feds do it?
The federal government does, already.
Okay, everyone okay? All right? Okay, thank you, Jim. Thank you for looking into that for us, so, and thank you, folks. Okay, that took care of the two kind of carryover items. Next is business from the council, and Bessie, anything to say?
I just want to check to make sure that I've got November's calendar right. We have no work session next week, but of course, that's Veterans Day. But we do have council on the 13th, and then care on the 20th. Do we have a work session on the 18th?
We do.
I had a question mark.
We do, okay. All right. It's here on our agenda, listed, the dates, except for care. Okay, anything else, Bessie?
No.
Okay, Bill?
No.
Okay, Dick?
Yeah, I went home last night, and I was looking at 11 o'clock news, Channel 3 from Eugene, and here was Representative Sarah Gelsner saying that they need to have the train stop in Carvallos. And, holy cow, here they come. And then here was Professor of something or other at Oregon State, and she was saying, oh, why yes, a big city like Carvallos, we ought to have the train stop here, and with the students and everything. And then I looked at today's paper this morning, and here it says rail passage route debated. And they talk about how there's going to be a meeting tonight in Eugene to talk about debating which rail to take. And here they're talking about, again, the prophet of Oregon State, a certain Glenn Corum Boraday, and they've already got a petition up, they've already got over 2,000 signatures to have a, have the train stop in Carvallos. And they say that after all, Carvallos is bigger than Albany, and I'm sure that that's when they count the students.
The students.
Rather than the actual taxpaying residents. I think the squeaky wheel tends to get the grease most places. I'm worried about squeaky wheels taking the train through Carvallos rather than Albany. And so I got out the schedule, and in the schedule that we got about Oregon passenger rail, and they talk about the four different routes. And the one that they suggest going through Carvallos says, well, it'll stop in Albany, but not at the Albany Station. So I suppose that's someplace off toward Millersburg, but so we've got to completely negate the usefulness of our station, wouldn't it?
The one line would. The other Carvallos one, pretty costly, that would cross over Highway 34 and not quite feasible.
The gist of what I'm talking about is, I think we would be smart to go to the meeting tomorrow night at Lynn Benton College and say that we, digging around in some of my past council stuff, looking for history on the railroad station, and it's here someplace. And here they're talking about Amtrak postpones decision to stop at Albany, and this is a 1977 news article. And it talks about how when you, Southern Pacific gave up on their passenger train, that they quit stopping here in Albany when Amtrak took over. And at this point in 1977, they're thinking about maybe stopping in Albany, and we know that they did eventually, a couple, maybe a year or so later, I think it was a year later, I think it was about the time they got elected mayor, that they began stopping in Albany again. And during the time I was on the council in the 70s, when representatives or candidates running for representative, or our senators, or whoever, particularly when they're running for senate, I would say, you know, Amtrak really ought to stop in Albany. Amtrak really ought to stop in Albany. I couldn't find it, but I, it seems like I got the council to get up a resolution. Amtrak ought to stop in Albany. Finally, they did stop in Albany. And since then, we've had our station renovated, we've developed the parking there, we've got our bus headquarters right there by the station, and I think it would be crazy to not be able to take advantage of our facilities here in Albany. So anybody out there in the audience, if you're watching on TV at this late time, I'd like to suggest that you too, if you're interested in riding the train, go out to Lynn Benton at five o'clock? No. Yeah, the meeting is from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Thursday, November 7th, that's tomorrow. So don't be bashful, testify that we like to have the train stop here in Albany, and we like to have a better train system stopping here. I'd like to urge you guys to go out to that meeting too.
I do, I do hope we can get quite a few folks there. I'm glad you brought it up, Dick. And I'm not able to make that meeting, but I'm on the Leadership Council, so it wouldn't be as appropriate for me to be there trying to, you know, voice or put the opinions in anyway.
One other thing I wanted to mention before I forget. I was hoping that we would have a reporter here, and that perhaps.
We do.
We do.
Kyle.
We do? Oh, you're the reporter?
Yep, Kyle, O'Gard.
Sitting at the recorder.
Yeah.
Usually I sit up here.
Yeah, you do have your own table.
Articles, you know all about it. So I think maybe you could, as part of your report on the council meeting, say that there's going to be that Amtrak meeting in, at Lynn Benton, because I look at this article in your paper, and it talks all about people in Springfield who might be concerned about how it works. And I look at it, and I say, well, where does it talk about Albany? And there's not a thing in here in Albany. And then I look a little closer, and I think, who's reporting this? And it's Diane Dietz, and that's the registered guard. And here's this article in your paper that's, you're plagiarizing it from the, we talk about Senator Rand Paul plagiarizing. I guess that, I guess that works okay for papers, to take other people's articles and stick them in. But you think you could give us a little reporting on what we think here in Albany? And you have to do it tomorrow morning, or it's too late as far as this meeting in Lynn Benton.
No pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Are you looking for a response?
He is.
I'll talk with you after the meeting. But you know, honestly.
I think, I think this is the first time it's ever happened. He has, does have nothing to say.
The reporter has responded.
Is this your first meeting?
No, he came last time.
Was he?
Yeah.
Was he Monday?
Kyle, you were your last, like, two weeks ago.
It was Alex Paul last time, wasn't it? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Alex was Monday.
Yeah, and last night.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't wait, well, I do mean to put you on the spot, but.
Yes, you did.
I don't think we were too mean to you.
So regarding that, I did see that on the TV with Representative Sarah Gelsner.
And then I went over to 13 to see if maybe they reported about us and our bond thing. There was Sarah again. She was on Boach.
So, but she is in still very much support of it being in Albany, too. She wants it, she wants it to take, the Carvallos folks, they're not really wanting it to not be in Albany. They want it to go to Carvallos, then take like the Highway 34 to Albany. But, but no, she's in support for having the both communities. But it's, I'm, would be very surprised if the outcome would be that way, because.
Seems to be high-speed rail.
Well, and the whole, and the whole kind of objective to it is to have more, kind of, not any more increase in stops, but to be able to make sure the time is more efficient. That would not, that would increase the timing. So it's, that's one reason it doesn't meet the, the goals on that.
You know, if we were in Portland, or Tacoma, or Seattle. I mean, if we were in Portland, or Tacoma, or Seattle, a 10-mile drive from here to the station, we wouldn't think twice about it. People in Carvallos shouldn't worry about driving over here. They'd find a parking lot here, they wouldn't find a parking lot in Carvallos.
Yeah, yeah. And the rail, the rail leadership, yeah, they don't have a station.
Their station won't, but they'll.
It's not even in their capital improvement program for even having a train station, you know, they even have no plans on it. But with the state, the rail Leadership Council meeting last week, I did convey your, you know, your concerns about wanting to make sure that the rail, you know, Amtrak does stay through Albany. So.
Well, I'm just thinking, if people from Carvallos show up by the dozens tomorrow night, that's a lot of squeaking.
So the leadership.
And if we don't even show up, those people, what the hell?
The Leadership Council does know that there has been a lot of input from Carvallos, but, you know, and I had conveyed to them that Albany could do the same thing, if that's what they would like to see. Many of the other communities also that would like to have Amtrak could do the same thing also. But, so pretty much, the decision's going to be made by going through these goals and objectives. But it would be very, it'd be, I think, very important to have, you know, the council and citizens of Albany came to this meeting and just was able to really show the importance of having Amtrak come through. The UP line is the most cost-effective route, route to go. So if it went to Carvallos and came back to Albany, if it took Highway 34, you're talking about two bridges would have to be constructed, because you would have the one coming from, over the Willamette, and one over the Calipoya River. So it would be a very costly project to try to have that route. And then the other route would be taking the Toledo branch, which would end up, there's no way Amtrak's going to want to come into Albany, come to our station, and have to turn around and back, back out of it. So that would really be a slower process. So, but I know a lot of the Carvallos folks, they agree, they, they understand, you know, Albany's infrastructure, what we have put in, the investment, they just want it to go to, to both communities. But they really went up for Carvallos, but many of the other communities would love to see that same thing. But, so yeah, encourage you to show up tomorrow night.
Again, the public out there, it's 5:00 at Lynn Benton tomorrow.
And it's at the Calipoya Center, isn't it?
It doesn't say either. It doesn't say at all here.
It should say on that, that flyer. I think it's the Calipoya Center.
Community college is all it says here.
Calipoya Room upstairs.
Calipoya Room, yeah.
Calipoya.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Dick?
No, I think that's enough.
Okay, all right. Okay, Floyd?
No, thanks.
Okay, Ray.
Question, did you track down the location for the trolley on Monday?
I was going to bring that up, and we are number 26 is our number, and we will be on the, I need to kind of clarify it more with Patty. She said east of Jackson Street, so she said like last year. So were, were we around the Legion last year when we started out?
No, we were just, just past the underpass, heading towards the police station.
We were.
Right across from the building that the county remodeled.
Mm-hmm.
The previous year, we were to the west of Jackson.
She said east of Jackson.
Yeah.
So.
What time does it start?
Coming on the, she flies from Overpass.
So we're number 26. I'll get it clarified from her.
That's where we were.
But yeah, and she said like last year.
What time?
Ooh, 10, 10, well, be there at 10 o'clock, parade starts at 11:00. Isn't it? I didn't check on the time, I'm pretty sure it's 11:00.
I was told Tuesday, parade starts at 11:00.
Yeah, at 11:00. So if you can be there around 10:00, and then we can get the trolley deck ready too.
On which side?
Okay, was that it?
Actually, this evening on the way down here, I came close to running over a guy who was crossing Sandy Am right at the, at the cross, the new crosswalk in front of Fred Meyer. I was right-hand lane, pickup left-hand lane, and I saw the pickup put his brakes on, and I got on mine real quick, and then we're talking about 15 feet. I understand we're having trouble with ODOT to get something going. I guess, something needs done. If we're going to have people crossing there, they need to have better lights, they need to have something, so that, you know, and as Mark pointed out, I mean, even with better lights, if somebody's blocking your view, but it was a wake-up call for me.
Yeah.
Enough said.
Well, and it's funny you said that, because it was last night, when I was coming from the courthouse, and then turning on to, going down Pacific and 34th, and to turn left, you know, when it's the yellow blinking light, and you turn left, and there was like no cars around, but there was a car, you know, facing east to be able to turn, you know, south onto Pacific. So their lights were like shining as I'm turning the corner, and there is a pedestrian walking, you know, northbound on that sidewalk, and it's a good thing I saw him, but it was so, it was just dark, and it's like, I'm, it's a good, I was lucky that I saw him, but I got to think, it is a pretty dark intersection for Pacific and 34th, and I just read in the paper, I think it was this week, that a pedestrian did get hit on 34th and Pacific. So I don't know if we've got some lights out, I haven't looked to see if there's any lights out, but it just kind of needs to be maybe looked. I know that's ODOT's jurisdiction, but where a pedestrian just got hit, and boy, it was dark, where I just struggled even see somebody coming. So you got, I'm with you, Rich, on that, it is, it just scares you.
Well, it just reminds, it reminds me that, you know, this time of year, we just, we just went into darkness again with, with the change from daylight saving time, and just need to be a little more cognizant surroundings.
And I do believe this pedestrian, it was not a time for him to be walking across that intersection at that time, but yeah, it's scary, so. Okay, is that it, council then? So Wes, did you have anything else? No? All right, staff have anything? No? Staff, all right. Our next meeting will be regular session, it's November 13th, it's changed for this month, and then because of the holidays, and our work session's November 18th. With that, we're adjourned, and thank you, folks.